Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and I'm going to call this City Council work session to order. Will you please stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I'll do roll. Councilman Loy?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Henderson?
Here.
Councilman Cock? He's not arrived yet. Councilman Burns?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Here.
Very good. Okay, we're going to roll right into a presentation. We actually have a special guest here tonight, County Assessor Danny Hagan. And he's going to be talking about the 2024 Change of Value Notice that we all received.
Awesome.
Good evening.
Thank you. I hope everyone can hear me okay.
Perfect.
I really appreciate the opportunity to be here to present. Change of Value Notices just went out just over a month ago. Last chance to file an appeal is Tuesday. So don't wait till the last minute, but you're kind of already close to it. So make sure if you do disagree with that assessed value, you can submit an appeal without any evidence now and get the evidence later. We don't want anyone to lose that right to appeal. But I have more things to talk about than just the Change of Value Notices. So I really appreciate you having me here. When Change of Value Notices were going out, I had my staff assistant, Ida, reach out to all the town and city councils in Skagit County to see if they would have me and if they would want me to help answer some of the questions that people might have. And I really appreciate the opportunity that you guys have given me. Some of the things we will talk about, so the next slide. Just kind of a reminder of what some of the three biggest positives of property tax are. How assessed values have changed in the Cedar Woolley area for 2024. Kind of talk about the reinspection of the Cedar Woolley School District properties that is now currently ongoing. Talk about how we've started to use street view imagery to make our process more efficient, but to also give residents more privacy. Talk about the senior citizen or disabled person exemption program. It's one of the parts about the assessor's office that is good news. And it's an opportunity for us to actually greatly reduce property tax bills for people that are in the most need. And then kind of just another reminder of some of the outreach that I'm willing to do if you or anyone you know is interested. So next slide. The three main benefits to property tax are transparency, local accountability, and efficiency. I don't know how much money in sales tax I paid last year. I don't know how much federal income tax my neighbors paid last year. But I do know how much property tax every single person in Skagit County paid. And I can say whether that's fair or not. And I think that added transparency really keeps accountability and it makes it so people have a better trust in those tax dollars. This is an example of that. This is my good friend Tina Tate, who lives here in the city of Cedar Woolley. This is her tax bill. And it shows exactly where the $3,336 she pays a year goes. And a direct part of that is city of Cedar Woolley, right around $938. So what I can, I live in the city of Mount Vernon. For less than what I pay in a cellphone bill every year, I can call 911. I can go to the park. I can go on sidewalks. I have fire in my house. Someone's going to show up for about half the price of what I pay a cellphone every year. So the transparency leads to local accountability. All these districts that you see up here, or most of them, are led by electeds. Council members, hospital districts, school boards, fire districts, county commissioners, and even the state school levy, kind of, is chosen by electeds and that's our state legislature. And then lastly, just efficiency. It takes, it costs money to move money around. So if we send money to Olympia or send it to Washington DC, it costs money to have it come back. And it always comes back with some kind of strings attached. And I think there's a lot of productive things that can happen at the local level without involving a state or federal government. And one way to actually fund that is through property taxes because it's actually a local tax. Next slide. So what happened to assessed values this past year in Cedar Woolley area? Overall, in Cedar Woolley School District, values went up about 2%. That is lower than all the other school districts in the county this past year. On average, residential values were about 5% increases. So Cedar Woolley was slightly less than that. We break the city of Cedar Woolley into two, what we call neighborhoods, north and south. The south part of town, values increased approximately 5%. And north part of town, values stayed about flat. There is some variance in that because we do get looked down at plat levels. So if there's a brand new plat being built, we will adjust that plat individually because those sales are pretty unique to new construction and all that. In commercial values, office space, office space is still slightly declining. Industrial buildings also saw a larger reduction. Fast food establishments and gas stations saw increases. One thing I've learned as an assessor, and I was kind of raised up in the residential side, which is most of what we do. But on the commercial side, when we're tracking values, we're really tracking sales. We'll have gas stations in Cedar Woolley that there's no sale on a gas station for four years. And all of a sudden, there is one. It's like, oh, we need to increase this 30% because it's so far behind the market. Residential, we have sales every year, so things are a lot more consistent. So when, when commercial values, they do tend to be a little bit more variable and that's kind of the why. Next slide. So we are currently doing a reinspection of Cedar Woolley School District. Cedar Woolley School District is one of the largest acreage school districts in Western Washington. It includes 16,742 residential parcels and close to 1,200 commercial and industrial parcels. We are going to physically inspect all of that with eight residential appraisers and two commercial appraisers. Our appraisers are well-marked. They are wearing the uniforms that you see. Kind of looks like a construction outfit, but then there's always a Skagit County logo on the back. They have name tags. We drive county cars that have the logo on the side. And if you ever in doubt, if you see someone out front, because a lot of other appraisers are out taking pictures of houses too for comparables and like fee appraisers, we don't mind calling our office. Hey, someone's out here. Is this one of your people? We have a board. We know where people are out. We can answer those questions. Since COVID, we've really tried to lean on using the imagery that we have to do pre-inspections of properties without actually going out there. And then, so we review aerial imagery, oblique imagery, and then street view imagery where it is available. And if all three of those things show that a property hasn't changed in six years, we're doing a really brief inspection. And we call that because DOR requires us to do that. But that really enables more privacy for property owners and keeps my appraisers from getting so many dog bites. The goal of all these inspections is really just to gain accurate property data. Whether it's square footage, the condition or quality of a home, those are the things that we're really looking for. Or if there's been unpermitted changes to the property. Next slide. So I've mentioned it a couple of times, street view imagery. This is an image of the city hall right out front. They drove by in September of 2023. For, for the vendor that we use, they're called Cyclo Media. Public Works was actually the first department of Skagit County to contract with them. And they drove every rural road or every road in unincorporated Skagit County. And using artificial intelligence with the camera, they were able to take an inventory of where every guardrail, every sign, every, all those things. So Public Works has an inventory with X, Y coordinates of where those things are at, the conditions they're in. That's when we saw this and we're like, whoa, this could be really useful for us in our office. But we really don't need unincorporated areas because we have to pay per mile. And so we were like, well, we're going into Anacortes, which is a pretty dense area for us. And this was about a year ago. And the vendor needed a minimum of 300 miles. And city of Anacortes, all their roads were about 200 total. And so, well, let's try and plan for next year. So we did Cedar Woolley as well in anticipation for this revale. In Anacortes, it worked incredibly well. Not only were we more accurate, we were more efficient. Like everywhere, we have turnover in our office and we're able to train better. Instead of just relying on one picture, we can sit down with the trainee and kind of look at a house and talk about the things without invading someone's privacy of doing that in their yard. And we're looking to continue this moving forward. One thing I really think this could be useful for is law enforcement. If there's a call in the middle of the night and you can pull up what this house looks like before you get there, you see where the bushes are, you see where the windows are. I think it could be very useful. And I just, every time I'm out, I try and talk about what some of the other benefits are for this street view imagery. And the cost for them to do the drive was actually very reasonable. Next slide. Our senior citizen and disabled persons exemption program. So one of my mentors, Rick Stewart, he's out of the state of Kansas. He's retired now. He talks about a state tax system being like a three-legged stool. You have your income ta, or your sales tax, your property tax, and the state income tax. Washington State, we have a two-legged stool. It's kind of hard to sit on, but they've invented a third leg, which is special taxes. The issue with all of this is it is very inequitable for our retirees. That means when you retire, you're still paying the same gas tax. You're still paying the same sales tax. You're still paying the same property tax, yet your income is going down. I really advocate for the senior citizen and disabled persons program because it's not about trying to give them some kind of benefit. It's really just about making the field fair. And seniors have worked really, really hard in the state. And we are where we are because of their hard work. And them getting priced out of homes is really hard for me to hear about. And so I advocate for this program. If you know any groups that want more information or a presentation about this, I'm willing to be out there. This was at Helping Hands Food Bank about a year ago. Where the income threshold is currently at $48,000 a year. That's usually the main kind of limiter for seniors is that income threshold. That goes up now every three years. So in two years, one or two years, I'm expecting that threshold to be closer to $65,000. So one thing I've really been battling is I'll talk with a senior that wasn't, didn't get in the program 10 years ago. Like, I didn't qualify. I don't qualify for it. Check again. Income thresholds change. We now have medical deductions. They can take off. So if you have a lot of medical expenses, those can be deducted from that income threshold. So this is a, it's a really important program to me and something I would really appreciate helping to get the word out on that. Next slide. So along with the senior exemption program, kind of willingness to do presentations, we do learning sessions. So this was at the Mount Vernon Senior Center. And we allowed seniors to come and they just ask questions about how to enroll in the senior exemption program. We now have a portal, so they're able to do that from home rather than having to come into our office. That's kind of a big deal for me because if you, if you live in Mount Vernon, that's, that's easy. But if you live in concrete and you're having to spend a quarter of your savings in gas getting to and from the office a few times, this is not fair or equitable. So the portal's up and running, so you can apply through the portal. If you apply and it's not fully filled out, it's not like it just ends. We get in, we get ahold of you. We call you up. Hey, we need, we need these things. How can we help you do that? We're really there to help, to serve the community and get into the program. I also talk about how property tax is a good tax. I actually think I gave that presentation here earlier in this year. I'm willing to talk about how assessed values are calculated. Our destroyed property and disaster preparedness program. It's a really good time of year to be talking about that. If someone's property is damaged in a flood or a windstorm, there's a form that they can fill out with our office. And this isn't to really, this isn't to help them out. This is just to be fair. They're being taxed on the value of a home that's now been diminished because of a natural disaster. Your tax bill gets reduced slightly, but we want that to be fair. And then I'm always just open for any coffee with the assessor. If anyone has questions, you don't have to come to my office. I'm always willing to come to you or any other taxpayer that has individual questions. Like that, I'm willing to go pretty much anywhere. I am invited. Last slide. And at that point, I leave it to if there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Danny?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor. So I thank you for coming over and doing this presentation. There's been a lot of questions about property tax. I actually noticed that mine didn't go up very much this year, which was nice. But it's like you were saying, like the average in the county was 5%. We see a lot of 5% increases, PUD, PSC, city taxes, just a lot of that. I'm not sure that the actual, like, wage is going up 5%. So one year, it's, it's not so bad. Two, three, 10 years along the line, people are now getting underwater. And one of the things we've seen is that the, the lower income housing bracket is widening. And, and so we're trying to combat that. So is there any effort in looking and evaluating these taxes to see like, are we, are we only taking in what we absolutely need and is there a way to bring that down?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I feel my job as assessor is really administrator of a property tax program. And with that comes a lot of kind of thinking about, is this the right way of going about things? I think one of the driving forces of the increased property tax bills over the last six years now is it was the McCleary decision. And that was the state legislature relying on a second part of that state school tax to fund basic education. And so if you go back and look at property taxes from 2008 to 2016, they really didn't change much. They, they were pretty consistent. Values fluctuated, but you can go onto your history roll and look up any property. There was a lot of consistency there. McCleary decision really shook that up. And so from 2018 through 2021, there was a rate-based portion of that tax. At the same time, values started escalating. And one of the things I was talking with Mayor Johnson about earlier is there's also been this, this shifting of taxes from commercial properties to residential properties because residential values have been going up at a much higher rate than commercial. That's the, kind of the problems. One solution that me and some fellow assessors are trying to promote is a homestead exemption. And a lot of states have that. And, and that's where if you live in your home, you get a reduction in your assessed value to really help support homeowners. It's not perfect, but it, it's better. And I think we need some kind of better. What that does is it shifts taxes kind of back to commercial properties and it would shift them to high-end residential properties. That would, that would take a pretty big lift by the state legislature. Or what we just learned is an initiative process, which seems to be easier to get actually discussed than state legislature. So yeah, homestead exemption would really be my, my one idea of what could be done to help smooth out the equity in property taxes. And my biggest concern is state legislature continuing to need more money for education and hoping they find somewhere else to get that other than property taxes.
Thank you. We recently, or I recently was invited to check out somebody's open house and, and they had an ADU in it. And they were telling us what the value of what they were selling it for and what the assessed value was. And there was about a 20% difference in, and so the assessed value is over a million for a residential home here in Cedar Woolley. It just seemed pretty high. How are we establishing these, these rates? Is there a red flag? I mean, is auto-generated calculator? Is there a red flag that goes up like, whoa, that property's at a million here in Cedar? Something stand out?
Unfortunately, there, there isn't anything kind of like a red flag. And the reason that is, is because this is mass appraisal. If we start kind of zeroing in on individual sales, we start treating properties differently. So we kind of create a model and, and, and apply it to the whole, the whole universe of properties. And sometimes that gets, we get it wrong. And it happens a lot more frequently when it's kind of an outlier property. If that's the only property with an ADU in that neighborhood, that could be different and our model's not working well. How we value is what we call a market-based cost approach. So we show up, we use Marshall and Swift kind of cost data. We collect all that, put it in, and then we compare it to, to sales of that area. And sometimes we, we get high on values. A really good example of that was Lake Kavanagh. Waterfront on Lake Kavanagh last year showed that we were like 20% below market. So we raised values 15% and we had a lot of appeals. And most of the people that appealed were like, whoa, you're right. And then we looked at sales this year, they, they were 10% lower. And so we don't always get it right. We do follow the sales. And just sometimes the sales don't always match up with the properties behind them in a good, good universe. But we're always working to improve those methods. And ADUs are a very new, newer thing. And so making sure we collect property data on that's important and why we do these reinspections.
Well, I'd love to sit down and talk with you maybe at some point about that. Get a little bit more understanding on how it works out.
Oh, totally.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming again.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming out, Danny.
Yeah, thanks, Alan.
It's real nice to have you out here. About the senior and disabled discount, are those variable rates depending on like, say, you're at $48,000, you said? And so that, that essentially bump you down to 80%, right? Of what you'd normally pay?
Yeah.
So what if you're like $10,000?
Then yes, it gets even lower. And so when I, when I say that $48,000, that is the, the max, maximum you can get to get into the program. There are three levels to the program. We call them one, two, and three. And I think if you're, at this point, if you're under $24,000, you're getting, I think, close to 80% reduction in your assessed, in your property tax bill. And even more importantly, your assessed value freezes. And so someone could be in the program for 15 years. And not only are they getting that direct percentage reduction, but their home's still assessed for $148,000 versus the bare lot next to it that's assessed for $200,000. And so it really is a benefit that the longer you're in the program, the, the more you gain. Some people get worried that if they go in and they come out for one year, that, that assessed value unfreezes. That's not true. You have to come out of the program for two years. So we don't want anyone to, to not sell a piece of property or inherit. Like something that makes them live better. They'd come out of the program for a year, would have to pay their full tax bill that year. But the next year, they'd go back in at the frozen level they were at.
Okay, so I did notice when you were talking about between 2008 and 16, like the rates were pretty much the same. Actually, they trended downwards as we got closer to 2016 by a little bit. So say if you were locked into that program and the rates came back down, would, would you in turn get to go down? Or do you just stay locked in at that value of, let's just say $150,000?
It's, it's not locked in, but if, and values sometimes do go down. If, it's always the lesser of. And so if your assessed value is 135 and your frozen's 150, you'd, you'd be in at 135. I would like to work on legislation. So if at any year, your actual assessed value is lower than your frozen, your frozen should go, it should be your new frozen. When the law went into place, they didn't ever think values would go down. And, and they did. And they, they might again, but we just don't know. But we need to be prepared for either way. So currently, it's the lesser of frozen or assessed. But I would like to work on legislation that brings, would bring the frozen down in line with that. That's a good question.
Thank you.
If you should ever come up with that legislation, try to get them to push for it. By all means, let us know. I'll happily make a phone call too and encourage them.
I appreciate that. That is one thing I've, I've learned is legis, good legislation takes a while and it takes a lot of different people getting involved. And yeah, we, we're going to be working to expand the senior exemption program as much as possible.
And I appreciate you having it online for them to file. That looks good. Thank you.
It took about three years to get that portal up and running. Four months later, we got it in Spanish. So that was a pretty impressive thing to help, help make sure we're being equitable with the whole county.
So a question regarding the disabled and the senior exemption. When they, say they die and then the person inherits the house or they go to sell the house. And that has, that has to be made up, doesn't it? Don't those taxes or not?
No. There's no, it is an exemption, not a deferral program.
Okay.
And, and so as soon as they would pass, they, they would lose the exemption. And that's one thing, the estate wouldn't get it. But no, there's no back taxes or anything that's owing on those. It is, it is exempted and those, the taxes that are lost are actually paid for kind of by the neighbors. The neighbors make up that difference in the levy calculations.
Okay. Thank you. I was going to ask you about that because it has to be made up somewhere.
Yep. No, every taxing district's still collecting their legally allowed levy. And so, yeah, it just, it just shifts to the other people. And the levy rate would be just a tiny bit higher to, to collect that same amount of money.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Well, as always, very informative. Thank you so much for coming out tonight and bringing, I forgot her name.
Shiloh.
Shiloh with us.
Yes. And as a fellow elected, I appreciate all of your hard work and really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
All right. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we are going to enter into public comment. I'll start online. Is there anybody online who has public comment? Nope, seeing none. I'm going to move to the council chambers here. All right, come on up. We asked that you keep it between, keep it about three minutes. Give your name and how you are associated with Cedar Woolley.
Good evening. So I'm not here to actually make comment. I'm here to make a presentation, basically a notice to the, to the citizens of Cedar Woolley. And as such, my name is Eric Johnson. I own property at 829 Metcalf and 516 Talcott. I would actually like to address the camera if that is all right with everyone because I am basically speaking to the citizens of the city. I'm not here, I'm here to inform the citizens of Cedar Woolley of a misconception that is being falsely circulated. It is true that my wife and I, for reasons of our own, have purchased a second home outside the city limits. It is falsely being circulated that the mayor is no longer living in town. This is completely untrue. She spends the majority of the week living in town and will continue to do so. There may be times when her vehicle is not in the driveway, but those are times when she is spending additional time over and above her part-time status with, for the city. Time I might add that could be reduced if the council were to actually work with her and not against her. Yes, she is, of course, would rather be living full-time with me, but her commitment and dedication to the city and the citizens of Cedar Woolley supersedes that desire. And I stand with her in that decision. So let's end these false accusations and get back to focusing on the needs of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else within the council here who would like to make public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. And we will move on to unfinished business. And the first item up is the draft request for proposal, affordable housing sales tax, capital affordable housing projects. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, so this is our RFP for the House Bill 1590 funds for capital. It's a draft. There's no counsel action necessary, but I wanted to share it with counsel to make sure we're all on the same page as we go forward into this process. And so there's, there are a number of things. Councilmember Burns reached out to me. Thank you for the outreach regarding the housing authority. So you'll note as you get into the RFP that we've got a process laid out for, once we get responses back, how they'll be vetted. And we've recommended that the Cedar Woolley Housing Authority be involved as, as kind of a screening committee to do the initial review of these and scoring of these for them to come to counsel because they're to do the initial review of these and scoring of these for them to come to counsel because they're technical experts. Councilmember Burns pointed out that they're also an eligible applicant. So, I would recommend, we, we have a number of choices. One, we could make the housing authority not an eligible applicant. I'm not aware that they have any active projects they want to pursue. Or we could insert a different committee into that role, like for example, maybe the planning commission or a committee that we would form. Or we can just not have any kind of screening committee, the council could do all the work. But most communities are having some other kind of technical expert screening committee involved in this. So, that's one element I wanted to point out as a piece of discussion. And as you get to the RFP, you'll see it's pretty thorough. We based this on Mount Vernon and their RFP. And so, there's a requirement for a pre-funding meeting with city staff to talk about projects and how they would fit into the requirements for 1590 with agencies. There are requirements for when we post information on the website, when we send information out, when we get back to people. And it is a thorough process. This is a significant contracting process that, and selection process that we'd be engaged in. So, it does take some time out through about the middle of next year before we're actually in a position to, to start letting contracts with individual potential recipients. So, wanted to just have a brief discussion with counsel, just consult with you to see if this looks like a process that you would, you would be in favor of and happy to take feedback, happy to talk it through. But we want to make sure whatever we put out there is something that the council would like to ultimately see.
All right. Any questions? Go ahead. Mr. Prince?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for your response, Charlie. Sorry I didn't get back to you, but I didn't come to this thought until I was on the way here. Thinking about the timeline and the fact that the housing authority would be an eligible body, I was thinking that maybe it'd be better if we condensed this by cutting out their individual valuation, but maybe invite the planning commission to do a joint meeting with us so that we have other people with different perspectives to discuss it with us as we consider the idea. And then we make our, our final decision on what we'd like to do. Just be my suggestion. It would shave, I think, a month or more off of the timeline and it would allow us to hear from people who have varied views.
All right. Good suggestion. Thank you. Anyone else?
Any concerns with that approach from councils that sound effective to you?
I would also agree that there would be a conflict with the housing authority being a part of it, being that they can also apply. So, I would be in favor of the planning commission or another entity being involved in that process. I do think that it would be good to hear from another body that is specializing in that, that area. So, I do agree with that part.
Anyone else? Mr. Lavaca?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I was, I, I am in agreement with that as well with Councilwoman Diamond and Councilman Burns. Also, the RCW that was presented from the email that Attorney Thompson sent back, the Department of Commerce, they said in their email, "There is no specific requirement in the legislation, so I cannot provide a solid answer." But somehow, we kind of interpreted that because they said, well, normally the funding's added to another set of funding and that's where it applies to the rules and regulations for that funding source. But we're adopting it as if it is the standard. So, I, I think it would be, you know, I don't think it would be correct to add that RCW to our RFP. And then also, it seemed like all the parties were in agreement, 50 years is pretty standard. But I would, I would suggest, you know, 20 years or something like that, something more manageable.
So, just a note for counsel, we put 50 years in there. Most cities have got 50 years in their RFP. That's been kind of the common interpretation of it. The risk for the city is a potential audit finding and then potentially any other punitive impacts that the state may want to play.
Audit finding of what? Who would audit and what would they find?
The state auditor's office will audit us.
And under what ruling would they find us in, out of compliance?
I'm gonna defer to our former state auditor to my left. She's gonna have a much better answer than I will.
I know that Nikki has done a lot of research on this and although the Department of Commerce didn't put in that email, that we did get verbal confirmation from them regarding the 50 years. So, I think it would be wise to include that because things can come out later and get kind of trapped.
I think there's business people even in this room that would know that a verbal contract doesn't hold up in court. So, getting a verbal phone call that says, oh yeah, that is, but then a written email stating an opposite fact, if this was to go to court and they were saying, hey, you built a municipal code based on this RCW that doesn't apply. I mean, I would find that to be more of a legal finding.
Yet, nothing that you would do, the majority of things that the city does with the, with the Department of Commerce doesn't involve a courtroom. So, they have authority.
But like you just said, like they would audit us based upon a verbal that they said, that they said over a phone at some point.
The state auditors would audit, audits the city of Seadrwully?
But they would do it based upon a verbal phone call from the Department of Commerce. Is that, like where, where would they, where would the auditor? If I'm dealing with an auditor, they show me an exact standard or a compliance note or some sort of RCW that's stating, this is what I want you to see from you. This is how you're out of compliance and this is how you get into compliance. And right now, I'm not seeing anything remote to that. In fact, I see the opposite where the Department of Commerce they referenced said, hey, there's no, there's no standing. We have nothing we can advise you on. So, I'm just, I, I'm confused on how it became in there suggesting it's law that we need to adjust to ours, to our municipal code and that we would be found out of compliance by an auditor's office from the state auditors when they don't even have a, a reference to, to cite us on. I mean, you might, yeah, I can't even see like general duty or anything like that.
I can't give any further explanation other than what Nikki has provided.
And we can certainly have, we've got some time before we issue this. We can have Nikki come back and talk about it a little bit more at, at next week's meeting. But one of the emails we got back from Commerce talked about, and I hated this word, but they talked about in, something like enduring, you know, longevity for the project or essentially that it should be permanent in some way. And how you define that, I have no idea. They did tell one of Nikki's clients verbally that it was 50 years. The reality is we don't know, but as city staff, we're gonna take the conservative approach and what we recommend to you. And ultimately, for taking that kind of risk of maybe going under this and interpreting it yourselves, we would defer to counsel on that.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. It does, and I gotta be honest, seem very strange that our legal advice is I got a phone call from somebody in one of the other cities I represent. So, you guys should adopt this as law based upon an RCW that the Department of Commerce who wrote it said doesn't apply to us. It's just, it, there's, it's just very strange. How many of these do we have? I mean, this is really small too because like I said, the parties involved said, man, it's not too much of a big deal, Nick. You're making too much out of it. But in my mind, legally, I'm looking at the actual definition. Are we within tolerance of the standard? And there's no standard I'm looking at. And I'm being told auditors will come after us. It's, it's the law, things like that. It just doesn't make sense. I do appreciate your work on it. It does seem long. I think that we were trying to get away from long and complicated. That was a big hope of ours as well.
It will get shorter now that we've taken a step out. So, that will probably take, I don't know, half-page. Some, some chunk of it will come out when, whenever we do it.
All right. Mr. Henderson?
So, Charlie, what, what committee do we have that would be most appropriate to screen these? Or should we form one? Because I don't think any of us are worried about working hard. So, if, if you can get ahold of the planning commission and we could form a committee, go over them and then that way, you know, we're not wasting counsel's time bringing something, something across that we know is not gonna work, right?
We could certainly bring a recommendation forward to you for a committee. That's definitely an option, a policy option. I heard planning commission joint meeting a little bit earlier, so it'd be helpful to have clarity from counsel and which, which direction you'd like to go, but whichever one you'd like to go with, we can definitely make it happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Burns, did you have another comment?
I was just reading through Nikki's email and trying to formulate my own thought on what Councilmember Lavaca was saying. And reading what they said, they, they do essentially defer to whatever other funding is being included. So, I would be open to either removing the 50-year listing in ours or at minimum, adding a line that essentially says, or making sure we have something that says that they need to comply with any and all legal requirements for all funding received for the project. That way, if there's something that has a higher restriction on it than what we're asking for, we make sure that they're in compliance with everything that they are doing.
All right. Very good. Anything else? Charlie, is there something in particular that you're looking for or is this helpful to you?
This is helpful. I really didn't want the council to be blindsided by us putting out a big process and not have you have a good understanding of what we're planning to do. So, what would be helpful to me at this point is we talked about a planning commission, city council joint meeting and we also have an idea out there of a, a committee that would do the screening. And so, it'd be helpful to know if council's got a preference between those two.
Okay. And probably that'll happen after the first of the year I take it, just given the schedule that we have and needing to get through the budget and the utilities and everything else that we're doing.
For the purposes of the RFP and transparency, it's better to put it in the RFP exactly what the screening process will be. So, people know we don't necessarily need to have the committee members identified, but it would be helpful to at least be able to say a committee will screen these or it will be a joint council, planning commission effort. So, it'd be helpful to have that direction tonight if possible and if not, you know, I can come back next, next time.
Go ahead.
I would feel comfortable if a few council members were selected for a committee and a few of the other was selected and bringing in.
Yeah.
Got a couple. I got a couple. So, for the folks who were thinking planning commission, joint meeting.
That sounds fair to me too.
Are you flexible on a committee?
Absolutely.
Okay. The only downside of that is it will extend the process a little bit longer, like back to where it is currently written. So, that's the only thing I want to point out.
Well, and that was the point I was making, that if we're gonna have that joint meeting with them. If I understand this correctly, have the joint meeting with them to actually go through this process together. Is that correct to determine?
My understanding is we would, we would form a joint committee. So, basically, these applications would come in, initial screening by staff just to look at.
So, that would be the joint committee. Okay.
Compliance. Then the joint committee would actually do the scoring that's in the RFP. And that scoring would come to the council ultimately for a final decision with a recommendation.
So, are we all in agreement of that? So, that we know that we're moving forward with that?
To clarify, Madam Mayor, it would be a couple of council people, a couple of people from the planning commission meeting as a committee on their own, just like our public works committee, things like that. Okay?
Exactly.
Would it be, it seemed like it would be something that would probably be a little bit more, you know, defined or structured at that point so that way we don't get lost in the weeds and it goes on meeting after meeting. We can get it right before the council.
Yeah, you'd literally have all the materials and a score sheet and we'd be going through that, having a discussion, going through the scores and make, coming up with the final scoring for each project and then making the recommendations back to council.
Great. And I would just note that I am inclined to agree with Councilman Burns. If we put something in there that said, you know, if additional funding must follow RCW, such and such, you know?
I'd be okay with doing the, the joint committee. My hope would be that we could condense it a little more than the April and May that was set aside for the housing authority to do it, especially if it's a smaller group. Just need a couple of weeks in a row and knock it out. That'd be great.
It will be easier with a joint committee because, yeah, that we're operating on a housing committees or the housing authorities meeting schedule, so we won't have to follow that.
Great. They meet every other month.
Yeah.
Six times a year. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Any other thoughts or questions?
Are we picking names for that committee now or are we gonna do that later?
Certainly, if there are people who want to volunteer, I'll take, we'll take you down. Okay.
If there's, how often do you think that you'll be meeting? I mean, it would be dependent upon the applications, right? The applicants.
I would imagine we're gonna send a lot of the material out ahead of time. Give the committee a couple of weeks to look it over, get familiar with it. You'll have the scoring sheet and everything. So, the goal would be to come to the meeting with your scoring done, having reviewed the material. And that way, we can have a relatively swift meeting, have some discussion on each project and a presentation probably by the applicants as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it was gonna be a lot, maybe we should have the committee A, committee B and rotate the two once a month. But I don't even foresee we have that many applicants.
I can't either.
Yeah. I, I mean, and then once they've applied, I mean, that's gonna be almost like a rare thing once we start bringing in the funds after we've spent what we've collected. Cool. I would volunteer too if, if it's up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you take a third if somebody else wanted to sit on it?
Absolutely.
I'd volunteer. Perfect. Okay.
Got it.
All right. So, with that, anything else you need from this? Or if not, we can move on to the OMPA? OPMA, sorry.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Under new business, we have the Public Records Act and the Open Public Meeting Act. And Kelly, do you want to talk about this? I know that you sent out information to the council regarding this.
Yes. So, looking through our records, we want to ensure that council and, and planning commission as well as any staff liaisons on those committees are meeting the training requirements, which are the Open Public Meetings Act and the Public Records Act trainings. They're good for four years. So, I think a couple of the council members, I know the ones who came on at the beginning of the year took these trainings. We just want to make sure everyone is in compliance. So, we'll be watching the video now.
So, I, I think for those, yes, just one here. For those, there are those who have already sat through this and have sent their certificate in. Those individuals are myself, Councilman Loy, Councilman Anderson, Councilman Cock. Councilman Lavaca, you said that you had also sat through this?
I did, but I don't, I didn't get a certificate that I remember. Did you guys get it mailed, emailed?
No, we had to.
Were you the one in December?
Yeah, I was with you guys.
I saw you.
You sat right next to me. Okay. But then I also turned in my originals. That was still valid from when I first came on.
I had to go online and redo it. It didn't, it didn't stick from that training we went to in Mount Vernon.
Okay. Well, I did turn in the paperwork from the first one. I just did it again last year just so I had it.
So, I, I see if you've already completed this unless you really want a refresher. I would say if you would like to go, you could go. For those who haven't, the opportunity is now to watch it and get it taken care of. Are you open to that? Would, that would be.
Does it restart us?
Restart you?
Yeah, like so.
Will you actually?
Will push me out to 29.
It will. If, if you have a signed one for tonight, it will last for four years.
I'll stay.
Okay. All right. So, but Councilman Loy and Councilman Lavaca, if you want to take off, go ahead and do that. All right. So, let's go ahead and begin it and that way we'll have it done. And the planning commission's also gonna have to do this, so.
So, we're gonna turn it over now to Gig Harbor, to Adrian Urquhart Winder with Foster Garvey. Adrian, I'm gonna let you go ahead and take it away with our OPMA training.
Good morning, everyone. As Deanna said, I'm Adrian Winder and I'm an attorney at Foster Garvey. And if there's anything scarier than finance or ethics, it's public records and open public meetings. So, you get to hear that from me today. And as Deanna mentioned, these topics are so important and have been such a source of mistakes by elected officials that the state legislature requires you to receive this training. So, you have to listen to me. I'm very sorry about that. But we'll go ahead and dive right in. Similar to other presentations, there is a lot of content to cover and only a certain amount of time to do it. But we want to make sure we get through everything, so I'll go ahead and get started. Okay, so, the Open Public Meetings Act. This is simply the concept that when you have a meeting on the city council, it needs to be open to the public unless you have a specific exception. So, this applies to all meetings of a governing body. And as you probably can guess, the city council is a governing body of the city. What you might not know is that it can also apply to committees of the city. And that's gonna apply in certain circumstances such as if you have a quorum of council members that are sitting on a particular committee or if that committee has been delegated responsibility from the council to make decisions on behalf of the council. So, just be aware that simply because you're sitting on a committee of, that the city council has created, it might mean that you're still subject to the OPMA. As a matter of course, a lot of cities open things like committees open to the public anyway so that it's not a concern, but just something to be mindful of. I'll go through this slide very quickly because it essentially covers what I just talked about, which is when you have committees, you need to look at certain factors to see if they're covered by the OPMA. But again, a lot of committees are already open to the public. But again, a lot of committees are already open to the public and can be as a policy choice, even if it's not required. Okay, so what is a meeting? And I think this is where it can get a little bit confusing, because a meeting is any meeting where action is taken. And action is very broad. It's the transaction of the official business of the city, and it includes things like not only receiving testimony, but your deliberations discussing things, considering things, reviewing things, evaluating things, and of course, taking final action on things, which is your traditional vote yea or nay. So there are lots of examples of what qualifies as meetings under the PR, or excuse me, under the OPMA. Some of those could be business meetings, they might be workshops, study sessions, committee meetings, retreats. All of these things can qualify as a meeting under the OPMA, and so don't let a more traditional form of the word "meeting" confuse you about when the OPMA might apply. If you're working with your fellow city council members on a topic of city business, you're having a meeting. It doesn't matter if you're standing in City Hall and just having a conversation over a cup of coffee, if there is a quorum of you, that is a meeting under the OPMA. So, did we just have a meeting? Meetings can take place in person, they can take place on the phone, email, text. What about when you travel together, like when you go to a conference? That can be a meeting. If you are traveling together and you are sure that you are not going to talk about city business, then maybe you're okay under the OPMA. But safest course is that your city is going to send out a public notice that says, hey, members of our city council are traveling to this conference at this location. Typically, people don't follow you there, but it's important that they know that you're there, so if they want to follow you, they can. If you're having informal discussions, they need to be limited to an exchange of information, so that might be something like FYI, here are these materials. Don't reply back to those types of communications, otherwise then you're engaging in a discussion. Straw poles, these can become trouble, in particular in executive session, which is a portion of a meeting that is closed to the public. If you're in executive session, you don't want to be doing things like, oh, I think I'm going to vote for this, and somebody says, yeah, me too, okay, how are we looking? Don't do things like that. That's considered basically taking a vote. Something like that needs to actually occur in public and should really be your vote taking action in a public forum. Serial communications, these can also be a point where things get tricky. You can have a chain of communications, it might be email, it might be text, where you are having a back and forth, and so they call that a serial communication or a chain meeting, and that is, that's been the subject of a few different cases under Washington law that a violation of the OPMA has occurred. So some examples and ways to avoid these issues, so that you don't get tripped up, no reply all, when there are other council members on that email thread. You may see your city manager communicating with you where your name's in a BCC line. That is intentional, that is so that you cannot reply to all, because many of us have made that mistake, or seen others make that mistake, where they intended to reply to one person and then replied to everyone. So using things like BCC is actually a helpful way, if, for example, a city manager wants to convey information to the whole council, but again, the mere exchange of information, but not cause a meeting to occur. Group text threads are another pitfall, don't get involved in those. Phone trees may be less common now with newer technology, but the concept is still the same. If Councilmember A calls Councilmember B, and they talk about something, and Councilmember B then starts calling Councilmember C and say, hey, I talked to Councilmember A, that's a serial communication that can constitute a meeting in violation of the OPMA. Another area of warning that is newer is things like Google Docs and tools that are used for group editing of documents. That can be tricky, because if you, as a council member, start editing a document, leave your comments on it, and then that goes to another council member, they see your comments, and then they add their own comments, you can see how this can quickly devolve into what's a meeting within the bounds of the OPMA. And social media, if you have a Facebook page for your city and you start commenting on it, and then other council members start replying to your comments, it can create an issue. Now, you're probably thinking, but isn't that open to the public? It's a public Facebook page. Here's why it's a problem. You have to notice a meeting in advance. You can't just have a meeting. There are different types of meetings in a city. You're going to have your quote-unquote "regular" meeting, and that's established generally by an ordinance that says, we meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month. It's a meeting that the public can count on, is going to occur, they can certainly be canceled, and that's fine, but it's sort of the regular routine pattern of meetings that your city has established. If it's not a regular meeting, it's known as a special meeting. A special meeting is any other type of meeting. It could be that trip to that conference to discuss, it could be, uh-oh, this new topic came up, and we need to have a meeting to talk about it, so we're going to notice a special meeting. It doesn't have to be limited to one topic, it can be a whole number of topics. When you do a special meeting, you need to send out a notice at least 24 hours in advance, and that notice includes an agenda of what you're going to talk about. When you go to that meeting, you can only take final action, that final vote, yes, no, on a particular topic, for something that is on your agenda. So it doesn't mean you can't talk about anything that wasn't on the agenda, sometimes things pop up last minute, but do not take final action on anything that wasn't on the agenda. I'll note, too, that your city clerk will post agendas for your regular meetings as well. It doesn't mean that you can't deviate from those things, but it's to help guide the public, so that, you know, they see, oh, you're talking about this project, I care about that, I want to be at that meeting. When the public finds out that some major topic was discussed at a meeting and they didn't know about it, that's when you start getting people upset. So that's what agendas and notices are for, and of course, the point of the OPMA is to give notice to the public, so that they can watch their government at work, and they can attend if they want to attend. There will be meeting minutes taken for every meeting, there's no specific format for that. It's becoming more and more commonplace to record meetings, either audio, or also sometimes with video, and some very recent amendments to the OPMA have expressly encouraged this, and they encourage cities to post those meetings online for at least six months, which is helpful, so that people don't have to bother the city clerk with a records request, and that they know what's going on. Is it required? No. So if the meeting's not recorded, the agenda and those meeting minutes are going to be sort of the official record of what happened at that meeting. Okay, executive session. So this will become a regular for you all, is sitting on a city council. This is the portion of the meeting where the public can actually be excluded. So typical reasons for having an executive session, I would say the most common is to talk about legal risk. If you think about the fact that, as council members, you can't meet as a quorum with the public, if you want to talk to your lawyer as a city, how do you do that? You do it in an executive session. Some other specific examples are if you're looking at buying or selling a piece of property. A big reason for that is because public knowledge of those types of acquisitions can lead to inflated or decreased prices, and it's very important that any criteria for an exemption, so for example, if you're looking to sell real estate, there will be a caveat in there about, is it likely to cause a decrease in price, or an impact on the price? You can also evaluate charges against a public officer or an employee, or you can review employee performance. So, for example, you can review the performance of the city manager in executive session, and that's considered okay. Very key point, final action has to be taken in public. Again, with the straw poles, things like that, it's your opportunity to talk about the specific issues you're allowed to talk about, but then you need to go do your final discussions and take your vote in public. All right. Also a key point, information learned in executive session. Do not share this. Executive session is intended to be a private meeting of the city council, and actually, disclosing what you're talking about in executive session is a violation of the Code of Ethics for Municipal Officers. So there are statutes that you would be violating if you share information. It can also be considered a misdemeanor offense and official misconduct, so please, do not share what you learn in executive session. Know that if you are a city and you have someone on your council, or otherwise, who is not abiding by that, you can actually take legal action to stop them from doing Executive session reminders, this is just some quick procedural points. The presiding officer's going to announce that you're going into executive session and state the general purpose of why, so we're going into executive session to discuss legal risk. You will also say, the presiding officer will say when the session will end, and if you go over that time, then someone has to go back out and let the public know that, oh, we need an extra 15 minutes. Interesting point, if you finish early in executive session, you can't start your meeting until that time you told the public you would start. So if you say, we're going into executive session for an hour, and you finish at 45 minutes, you don't go back in until an hour has passed. Otherwise, again, public says, you were supposed to be gone an hour, you came back 15 minutes early and started talking? So you can kind of see these things start to become, you know, more obvious about, oh, okay, that makes sense why we would do that. People in executive session are going to be, obviously, you as council members, other people who are invited to participate because they're necessary to that discussion, and if you're talking about legal risk or litigation, you need to have your lawyer there. Otherwise, that's going to be kind of strange, that you're having a legal risk discussion without your lawyer. Public records reminder, there is no exemption for records just because they were used or created in executive session. So if you take notes of your executive session, that creates problems for your public records officer, so, or if there's agendas that are passed around, or if there's materials that are distributed, there's not a catch-all exemption for, oh, that was used in an executive session. So be thoughtful about notes, records, and things that you take, it's better to avoid that, if possible. And some final executive session reminders, the executive session is for a very specific purpose, and the courts are going to provide the narrowest construction possible. I've put a point here to the Columbia River Keepers versus Port of Vancouver case, where the court looked at the acquisition, excuse me, the sale or lease of real estate, and it had to do with looking at the price at which you would sell or lease. The Port of Vancouver was having meetings that talked about a lot more than price, they were talking about deal terms, they were talking about context, and the court said, no, that is not what the executive session is for. You need to talk about context in the public meeting first, then you can go to executive session, talk specifically about price, then you can come back out into public session, and if it's the appropriate time, you can take your vote, or move until, you know, the next meeting where this issue might come up. A very key point that I want you all to remember on executive session is that it's everyone's job to help ensure that you comply with these rules. If you think the topic is veering too far off course, you're getting too much into context and not about what the statute is about, or it's sounding like people are starting to kind of vote on things, raise your hand and say something. It's important to create a culture that it's okay to speak up. This kind of stuff happens naturally as part of discussion. It's not, it's usually not because someone is trying to create an OPMA violation, it's that you're involved in a discussion, and sometimes things can start going astray. And so, in some cases, I've audited executive sessions before, and I'll hear someone speak up and go, okay, I think we're starting to get a little off-topic, so let's bring it back to this. And that's what you, that's what you need to be doing. Your city attorney will help monitor that as well, if they are at your executive sessions, but it's everyone's job to do it. So don't be afraid to say something, and help keep everyone on course to avoid a violation. Okay, public attendance at meetings. This is, this is new, that you actually need to have a physical location for people to be there at your meeting. Interestingly, you don't have to be there, you can still be remote, and so you could literally have a phone in the middle of a room that the public can come and listen in that way, or you can have it projected up on a screen, but you do have to have a physical location, unless there's an emergency. And the legislature broadened what can be an emergency, it basically is if it's not safe to have a meeting, you cannot, not safe to have a meeting in public together. You don't have to, and you follow the procedures to, to take care of that. There are no conditions on attendance, you can't make attendees at a public meeting register their name or complete a questionnaire, you can do registering name for public comment, however, but you can place some reasonable conditions for health and safety. So one that's come up more frequently in recent years is masking. Can you require that attendees wear a mask at your meeting if we're at another COVID spike, to help protect the council and staff and members of the public? Yes, you can make that requirement. Okay, public comment, this is going to be a regular course of your life. Public comment is now required at every regular meeting. It didn't use to actually be required, even though most agencies would have it anyway. It's now required. It is at regular meetings, it's not required for special meetings, but it is recommended at your special meetings, too. OPMA doesn't say when public comment has to occur, I've seen it held all sorts of different ways. A lot of times, there'll be a section at the beginning of the meeting where the public can address, and it can be written comment instead of oral comment. So if you do that, you just need to let the public know when the comments have to be submitted by, and then they need to be distributed to each of you as a council member. You don't have to require public comment during emergencies, and again, reminder that if your committees are subject to the OPMA, so does public comment stuff, although generally speaking, a lot of that is going to be special meetings, but be mindful of the public comment aspect. So managing your meeting. Your meeting is what's called a limited public forum in speech parlance. So what that means is that cities can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech, and you do that through rules of procedure and conduct. Very, very key point is, these rules need to be viewpoint neutral. If you're going to allow speech on a particular topic, you can't let one person who's in favor of something you like speak, and then chew off somebody who disagrees with you. First Amendment considerations are very important during public comment. I will just warn you, develop a thick skin. If people are criticizing you, commenting, calling you out by name, as long as they're not being really, really horrible about it, you just want to let them talk and then move on. Oftentimes, cities will have, you get two minutes for a public comment, and if they've exhausted their time, then they need to sit down. And you can't do things like simply just ban hate speech. Unfortunately, it's becoming more and more of a problem in today's day and age, we've had some more aggressive people showing up at meetings, and even people who just like to stir up trouble, that like to appear remotely, they're not even from your city, they just want to be difficult. So that's created some new challenges. MRSC has been staying on top of these things and has some great posts about how to help deal with people who are disruptive to your meetings, but you have to actually disrupt a meeting before removal's allowed. That's a really high threshold, and you should treat it that way. As I said, develop a thick skin, give them their two minutes, and then move on to the next commenter. You don't need to respond, just let them say what they're going to say. It's just easier than dealing with a claim or a lawsuit later that someone's free speech rights were violated. So with respect to that, you can limit comments to particular subject matter, for example, things that are on the agenda. If you don't have to, it's just easier to just allow public comment. Then that way, people get their words in, and you don't run into people complaining that their First Amendment rights have been violated. Remote meetings have some unique pros and cons. From a con perspective, like I mentioned, you may get the straight person who just appears in your meeting to be difficult and isn't even a constituent, but you can more easily remove them if they're causing problems. If someone's going over their time, you can give them a warning and then press mute, or you can even disconnect them if you need to. I would prefer you just use the mute button, if possible. And there are some, again, potential limitations you can use. I would not use these unless you really have a problem that needs to be addressed, and again, MRSC is a great resource if you need help with something like this. Okay, so what if you violate the OPMA? Sometimes it happens. There is a way to cure that. For example, if the notice wasn't proper, then unfortunately, the things that you did at that meeting are void. So what do you do? You send out a fresh notice, and you have the meeting again. You send out a fresh notice and you have the meeting again. You can't just summarily approve of things. You need to have the discussion, the debate, allow opposing people to say their piece. But that can cure an OPMA violation. But what if you don't cure? What if somebody sues the city for an OPMA violation? As long as it's unintentional, then the result is that the action is nullified. You are responsible for that person's attorney's fees for bringing the lawsuit. So there is a cost involved there. But if you knowingly violate the OPMA, that's actually personal liability on you as a council member. First violation's a $500 fine, after that, it's $1,000. And also, if you fail to cure things, you run the risk of nullifying future actions. Because if that earlier action was the basis for future actions taken, you can kind of create a domino effect. So it's important that if you catch that the OPMA was violated, it's best to just own up to that and fix it. A lot of these are fixable. And, and this is why this training is required, because most people violate the OPMA on accident. And so it's just knowing these, this new world, if you're new to public service or government service that you're in, that things need to be done in public. All right, so turning now to the Public Records Act. This is also going to affect you every day. So, let's see. All right, Public Records Act was initially an initiative measure, actually, fun fact. And then it became part of our law back in 1972. So it's been around for a while. There we go. Okay, you remember this thing called the copying machine? It seems like they're getting, you know, more and more obsolete. So what's the point of the Public Records Act? Agencies have to make all of their public records available for inspection and copying unless there's an exemption. So what is a public record? Oh, I didn't realize these were all on little things. Okay, so I'm going to go through these real quick. I'll just bring them all up and then talk through them. Come on, clicker. Okay. All right, so there's three elements. Remember, public record is broadly defined. The first piece is any writing. I'm going to tell you right now that anything that you can possibly conceive of, it's a writing. I know it may seem weird that, well, but it's just data. No, it's a writing. It's all a writing. If you look at the definition of writing in the PRA, you would be shocked the things they come up with that is a writing. A photograph, that's a writing. It's, again, kind of a strange misnomer to call it a writing, I think, for some people. But just know, you're never going to avoid it being a public record because it's not a writing. That's, that's just not something you're going to see. The two things that it usually hinges on is it needs to relate to the conduct of government or the performance of a government or proprietary function, and it needs to be prepared, owned, used, or retained by the city. I refer to that and others do as the poor test, so that you remember all the pieces. Prepared, owned, used, and retained. You as city council members, things that you create, things that you use, things that you have, it's a record of the city. It's not just your, well, it's not your record, it's the city's record. Okay, responding to public records requests. Records requests need to be responded to promptly, and this is very important. At least an initial response needs to be sent within five business days. So it's typically a week unless there's a holiday. You have to provide the records, provide an estimate of time if you need more time, seek clarification, or you can deny it. Bigger requests are usually produced in what's called installment, so you send out chunks as they're available. Exemptions and, excuse me. So exemptions and exemption logs. Sometimes material in records is exempt. So for example, if it's an employment-related record, there's an exemption that protects your residential address, your personal email, your personal phone number. There are lots of exemptions that can apply, and I'll cover some of these that you might care more about than others. And so if the record can be redacted to make it releasable, that's the preference. So for example, if you can de-identify the record, say by removing a name from it, then release the rest of the information. That's what the Public Records Act will want you to do. And you also have to explain how the exemptions apply. Okay, so some general principles to remember. You can't distinguish amongst requesters. There may be requesters that you can't stand. Every place has their people. But you can't distinguish against them. You need to be treating everyone the same with respect to public records. There are some exceptions. For example, if an employee wants to look at their file, they have a special statutory right to look at their personnel file. Why they are requesting records is not relevant. This comes up all the time. People get frustrated, like, why? Why is this person requesting records? Doesn't matter. They don't have to have a reason. We have to still respond to it. They don't have to use a special form. You can have your form and hope that they use it, but if they walk up to you at a city council meeting and say, I would like a copy of the city's budget, they just made a public records request to you. So you need to be on the lookout for these things. Another issue over broad requests. They can issue a request that covers years' worth of material. And unfortunately, the city, you're still going to have to respond. It may take a lot of time, it may take a lot of resources. But if your question is, well, can't we make them narrow it? No, you cannot. You can try to clarify. Your records officer may try to work with them, but there's only so much you can do. If someone wants to send you a very broad records request, that is within their rights under the PRA. PRA covers requests for records, not information. So they need to be looking for a specific record. And it is actually in the statute that we provide the fullest assistance to requesters. So we need to try to help them get what they're looking for. So again, with the hidden requests, watch out for these. If you get a request, whether it's in an email form, or someone talks to you after a meeting, or they submit a comment card, you must immediately get that information to your public records officer. Most of the time, that's going to be your city clerk. You will quickly learn who your public records officer is, and they, depending on the size of your city, they may have others working for them and with them to process PRA requests. But you need to get that in the right hands. Because if it's not responded to within five days, five business days, it's a PRA violation. You don't want to put your city in that position. So if you don't know, just give it to the public records officer, just to be sure. The public records officer is trained in a lot of detail how to respond to these, and they'll know what, what needs to happen. Even if it's that, well, that's not actually a PRA request, but thank you for giving it to me. That's, that's the approach you want to take. Speaking of your public records officer, I want you to think of Jerry Maguire, Tom Cruise, whoever you prefer. Help me help you. Your public records officer needs to help the requestor. Please help your public records officer. They work very hard. Public records requests can be very frustrating and very tedious. They will ask you for information, they will ask you where records are located. They will also help you if you need help, tell them you need help. But please, please, work with them because the ramifications for violating the PRA affect your city. So if any one person is being problematic, it really can create a financial obligation on the part of the city and liability that you want to avoid. Okay, so let's talk a little bit about privacy, because I'm sure that this is near and dear to all of your hearts. If you're coming from a more private sector life, you, you just leave all of that privacy behind. You are subject to greater transparency and scrutiny as, as a public officer. So there's no general right to privacy under the PRA. You can't just say, oh, but it violates my right to privacy. There are certain things like potential constitutional interests that might be implicated, but that's not generally what is ever, there are cases that talk about that, but usually a city's not going to rely on that. Again, redaction often resolves these issues, even if someone can figure out that the record's about you. That's really frustrating for people. Because oftentimes, records requests come from people who know things already. And so they're looking for something specific, they already know who's involved. And so the city can redact your name, and you can be very uncomfortable that this information is being released. But from the court's perspective, it's de-identified. We can't control what the requestor knows or does not know. And so unfortunately, your hands are sort of tied on that front. Know that you might get a third-party notice from your public records officer. Those are optional unless it's required by statute. Most of the time, they're sent out on an optional basis. And oftentimes, that happens because there is something that's sensitive in the records. Maybe you were talking about your children or health issues or personal things in an email that came up, and they say, hey, this is going to get released. You've got 10 days to go get a court injunction if you want us to not release it. Unfortunately, that's tough on you, that's tough on employees that get the same kind of notices. But just don't be surprised if you receive those. Respond promptly if you receive them. And just be aware that the clerk probably doesn't enjoy having to release sensitive information any more than you do, but the law, the law says what it says on these issues. Okay, so there are certain PRA exemptions that do apply to the extent it would violate a person's right to privacy. This is a very high standard, high, high standard. Look at that blue language in the bottom where it says, it is not enough that disclosure may cause embarrassment to you or others. That is in a statute. If it makes you uncomfortable, if it's embarrassing, the court is very sorry, I'm sure, but they are not going to prevent it from being released. So think about these principles when you create records. If you don't want people to know things about your personal life, like the names of your children or that you had to take one of them to the doctor, don't talk about it in a public record. Don't write it in a public record. It creates uncomfortable situations for the records officer, and it overcomplicates the process. The standard, the standard for privacy is highly offensive to a reasonable person and not of legitimate concern to the public. A lot of things are going to fail for it's legitimate concern to the public. Things like how dollars are spent, items like that will always get released. Information about how a city manager is performing, things like that. And it has to meet both of these tests. Highly offensive, you've got to think really highly offensive. One of the standards that's used as one of the key cases has been like cases where a teacher's accused of having sexual misconduct with a student, and they didn't do it. And so having their name attached to that, I mean, that has very serious consequences. So you're talking about that level of highly offensive. Okay, I'm running short on time, surprise, surprise. So I'm going to speed through some of these, but they are no less important. Separate your city business from your personal life, please. Your city likely has policies that say, use city email accounts. Please use city email accounts. Don't use personal emails. If you're given a city phone, use your city phone. Don't text on your personal phone. The reason for this is because public records are public records. It doesn't matter if they're located on your laptop, on your personal cell phone, or anywhere else that you might consider private. These records belong to ultimately the state of Washington. You don't have a privacy interest in public records. There are several cases now that emphasize this and say, too bad, you have to search those devices. So please, if you care about these things, and some people don't, they're a very open book, and they're like, take my personal phone and search it, there's, I'm not hiding anything. Most people, in my experience, are not like that, and they don't like people looking at their things. So the, the burden is going to be on you to have to search your personal devices if you're using them. Sometimes cities don't have the budget, or you're getting a stipend or things like that. So just do what you can if you're using a personal email because you don't. I think pretty much all cities have email domains for their council members. In some of the smaller agencies I work with, sometimes they kind of have to use personal email. Then keep separate folders, you know, keep things organized so that you can say, this is my practice, here's my things. Just know that you are not going to hide a public record by keeping it on a personal device. You're just creating difficulties for yourself and your city. All right, this is just the Nissan case. This is the Pierce County prosecutor who was texting on a personal phone. The court said, uh-uh, search your personal phone and hand those texts over. A quick retention note, which we also need to cover. Turn off your auto-delete for texts. Some phones have provisions that allow them to roll off after a certain period of time. I would disable that because there are, as we'll talk about, retention requirements. You don't want things being deleted on accident, that's, that's not good. And so turn those off. And then again, if there's a better format, text messages are tough because they're not easy to, to retain. If you don't need to send a text, then don't. Put it in an email. An email is on a city server, it can be pulled easily, you don't have to search your phone, it's just better. Text messages are kind of a pain from a, from a, a public record standpoint. So if you don't have to use it, then don't. Texting like, I'm running late to the meeting, fine. That's actually called a transitory message, and you can delete something like that because that's not considered worthy of retention. All right, reminders about electronic records. Electronic records are just like paper records. So if it's an electronic record originally, it needs to stay that way. You can't print it out in paper and delete the original and say, well, but here's a copy. Don't do that. There's metadata in electronic records, and that itself is a public record. Again, reminder about don't overusing reply all. This time, it's not because of an OPMA violation. It's because if you copy 10 people on an email and everyone replies all and says, thanks, great, see you later, that's a lot of records to look through. So just be judicious about it. Think twice. Do I really need to reply to this message? And do I really need to reply to everyone on the thread? Okay, so we've pretty much covered this by now. Your city likely has policies on things like using texts on cell phones, city devices. Follow them, please. It just makes everyone's lives easier. And using records retention schedules to your advantage. I'm going to use that to, oh, let me talk about enforcement, and then we'll talk about records. Records management. This is where everything really, really hurts. The penalties for PRA violations are, they can be very, very severe. So cities can be penalized up to $100 per day, per record. And there are even in some bad cases where the record was by page, where there was some particularly bad conduct. There are also some individuals that like to wait until 364 days later, right before the statute of limitations on a lawsuit, to file and let you know that the PRA has been violated to maximize that per-day penalty. As you can imagine, these can add up very quickly. There's a lot of factors the courts consider on leveraging these, and it's a big deal. The other issue is, of course, attorney's fees and costs. That often is more expensive than the records penalty itself. Again, PRA is liberally construed, and the burden is always on you as the city to justify what you did. All right, so quickly, we're going to swing through records management because I'm about out of time here, but I want you to see, that is a records retention schedule. It's deceptive because it's just that nice little page, but these are like 400 pages. Talk to your city clerk about records management. There may be policies that you should be following. The point with these is that records retention is also an important requirement. It's in a separate chapter, but remember, public records are the property of the state. If you leave office, you need to deliver your records to your successor, to the clerk. Get them saved with the city, don't take them with you. Creates problems, again. If you unlawfully destroy a public record, it is a Class C felony. That surprises most people. So I want you to know that even if it may be not super likely, you get charged by the prosecutor for that. Please don't do it. Okay, records with minimal retention value. These are that transitory record, that term I used before. I have some examples here, and you can look at them in your materials. Think of copies of messages. Again, if you're on a thread that's got 10 people on it, probably the sender is the person who needs to maintain that record. And if you don't need it, you can delete it. But you need to look to your agency's policies on how they do records retention. Records retention causes huge issues from a, a budget standpoint. You can imagine, you know, more server space, more places to save things, we're running out of room. And then, when you get a PRA request, the number of records that has to be reviewed gets extraordinary, and it's a humongous burden, let alone the fact that you can't find anything because you have too many records. So it's not, it's, it's not a problem to delete records when they're allowed to be deleted. And when they are allowed to be deleted, please delete them. And if they're transitory and you don't need to keep them, then delete them. And remember, and this is, I think, my last point, you can't always delete because everything in the law is, well, but, yes, but. Litigation holes. If you get a letter from your city attorney that says, do not do not delete any records regarding the dispute with so-and-so, do not delete anything. That can subject your city to serious sanctions by the court, and your city attorney might have his or her head explode. So if you get a litigation hold, keep it all. It doesn't matter how benign, just keep it all. The other is if there's an active records request for it. So if you have a record, even if it's transitory, even if it's junk mail, and a records request has now come in for all of city council member X's email from 2023, guess what? That junk mail is now responsive, and if you delete it, you violated the PRA because there's an active PRA request for it. So if you get a hold notification from the clerk that says, we have a public records request for these records, again, don't delete anything, it creates liability. So final points, and we'll stop. Again, learn and follow your city's policies on records management and retention. And this hearkens back to the personal device issue. Be prepared to sign a Nissan declaration regarding a personal device. It may be that you say, I attest under penalty of perjury that I do not use my personal device to conduct any city business. But oftentimes, you'll still have to do a search, and you'll need to attest to that search. So if your public records officer comes to you asking for help in completing one of these declarations, please be prompt and please help them do that. It helps keep you and your city out of trouble.
So we're going to turn it over now to Gig Har-
Okay. Oh, no, do we have to? So that is it for the evening. We are about ready to adjourn. Just making note that there's a city council meeting next week on the 13th. Is there also a planning or the, the planning and business? Is that moving forward as well?
We are discussing that between Councilmember Lavaca and the chair and I, but probably.
Okay, all right. And that begins at 5:00, and of course, the council meeting at 6:00. All right, everybody, thank you so much, have a good day. We're adjourned.